In South Fulton, it doesn't look like this is a good answer. And so, um, so the scores in South Fulton range from a low of twenty-three point seven in Hayfield, which is zip code three oh three five four, to a high score fifty-six point zero, which is Fairborough. So even at the high watermark, we're still below the overall level for the region. And that is an issue that ought to concern all of us. And here's why. So we sort of think about economic development as one of the major challenges. That's not, I'm done with that. And so we think about jobs, the ability to attract jobs, create an environment in which employers have the opportunity to prosper. And I'd ask you to think about the challenge from the standpoint of a triangle with economic development at the base. On one side is human development, on the other side, community development. We're going to focus on human development. But let me define those other two. Economic development is pretty clear. Clearly understood. But from the community development standpoint, it's how do you create an environment in which the individuals who live here feel and are empowered with the skills necessary to contribute to the public dialogue about what's the future destiny of the community looks like? Are they voting? Are they engaged seriously in the sort of work of community to ensure that South Fulton can grow and prosper as any of us would hope it would? And on the human development side is how do we deal with the challenges that people may possess that get in the way of their ability to pursue their own destiny? We're talking about education, we're talking about jobs, we're talking about the ability to live in stable and affordable housing, the ability to access affordable healthcare and a host of things. So I guess to think about these things as a, as a triangle. And we are focused on three ideas, three issues that were identified by a group of concerned citizens here in South Fulton, who looked at the child well-being data, looked at those fourteen indicators, and said there are three things that we ought to be focused on most urgently. One is high school, college, and career readiness. The second is addressing the challenges faced by a significant proportion of families that are suffering from a house cost, housing cost burden, which means they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And finally, the percentage of families that are not stable. United Way has a couple of initiatives that I'd like to just briefly mention that are focused on these three issues. One is called Youth Works. And it's a focus on what we call sort of, people who are sort of out of school, disconnected, not at school, not working, roughly between the ages of sixteen and twenty-four. And how do we provide the kinds of supports necessary, make them actively engaged in the kinds of educational circumstances that they need to be, but also how do you prepare them for the kinds of jobs that they should be qualified for? So it's a multi-pronged approach that deals with educational pathways, employment pathways, provides access to social and other kinds of supports and connections to employers. Why is this necessary? Because there are about forty thousand kids in South Fulton who are dealing with, who are living in those communities of low and very low child well-being. But there are about three thousand, almost four thousand kids that are sort of in that sort of disconnected youth category. So we've got four thousand kids roughly, who are sitting around, not working, not at school, applying age to be doing either of those, but currently creating circumstances none of us would feel are good about. So how do we address their needs? And the Youth Work Initiative is designed to drive forward progress for those young people. The second one is called Atlanta Career Rise, which is a multi-sector initiative that has really been focused on helping low-skilled and unskilled people gain access to labor markets. You may be familiar with the work that Youth Work, uh, excuse me, that Career Rise has done with, met the, you know, Metropolis and other kinds of related initiatives. We have been able to provide opportunities for, of course, training in healthcare, logistics, electronics manufacturing, hospitality, brokerage services, and the airport. A host of, of jobs and industries that are all sort of prospering around the current airport, but will grow and prosper as the Metropolis fully realizes all of its potential. But it's all about how to create employer-led partnerships that address the needs that they have in workforce, but also simultaneously address the needs of those individuals who are looking for work. It's all about how do you bring all of these pieces together? I also mentioned that the groups of volunteers decided not only to look at sort of career readiness and college readiness and those kinds of things, but also the, the challenge of high percentage of, of families that are financially unstable. So we know statistically across the nation that forty percent of Americans are unable to cover a four hundred dollar emergency. Forty percent. We're talking about four hundred dollars. They don't know a person they could borrow that money from, and they don't have that money in their savings account. The challenge, given the level of poverty that we're seeing in South Fulton, is that that number is probably even more sensitive. There's probably far less than two hundred that puts these families at a pretty significant challenge. And if you think about also the fact that a number of the calls that we get to two-one-one are all about food, how do I find food and food banks? How do I find resources that will enable me to keep from having my light shut off, the gas shut off, the mortgage called upon by the bank, or get me moved out of my house because I'm not able to pay rent? There is a sensitivity that some folks have here in South Fulton that puts them sort of on the receiving end of the United Way two-one-one services. But again, it sort of gets to human development, community development. We're not going to be a community that's able to successfully attract and retain employers who bring the highest paying jobs if the challenge that the residents bring to the employer, whether it is filling out a job application or applying for the jobs, can be met. So we've got to find ways to address their needs as well. We also talked about cost burden, households, thirty percent of the income that they have is going to rent. When you think about the statistic that says that if you want to afford the average two-bedroom apartment in metro Atlanta, you better be earning north of eighteen dollars for the average two-bedroom. So say it's not, say the average rent is not going to be fourteen hundred dollars in South Fulton, just say it's nine hundred and sixty dollars. Then you still gotta be earning sixteen dollars. So we've got to be able to prepare folks to qualify for those jobs. And if they're not qualified for the job, they're earning minimum wage, which is north of seven dollars an hour, there's no reason to be surprised that they're calling two-one-one at such significant numbers for the things that none of us ought to be worrying about, whether somebody's going to come chase us out of our house because we're not making payment, or if somebody is unable to sort of find food on a consistent basis, you know, abilities. And so, United Way's sort of focused on all of those things and working with the volunteers and others to sort of bring attention to those challenges. So I think for us, the call, the action that we'd like to continue to partner with all of you on and to enlist others in is addressing those. How do you bring awareness to these challenges, but not simply awareness? How do you bring engagement among those multi-sector folks that I mentioned earlier? Folks in the public sector, private sector, nonprofit sector, faith sector, to see these as public issues worthy of their attention, but also worthy of their action and engagement? We simply need to have far more voices, far more people, and far more policy strategies focused on these. Second, again, is to sort of galvanize that cross-sector leadership, to sort of make this a priority. Again, that triangle is not simply just about can we find the folks who are going to come and design here and bring good jobs here. We've got to make sure that the residents qualify for the job. People who do South Fulton know good if the jobs are going to be attracted here are going to be filled by folks coming from South Fulton. And the, the basic sort of standard of living for residents here doesn't improve at all because the folks earning the money in those high-paying jobs are taking it back to help or better, are taking advantage of it. So we've got to make sure that local residents qualify for those jobs. And finally, things like Career Rise, things like Youth Works, things like sort of the work that we're doing, if that occurs in other places, need to be supported and scaled. If they're working, they're working. This is not simply a charity work. Yeah. You know, a charity is not going to solve these problems. Charity is going to be an important component in this. I forgot of the work that United Way is doing, but it is not going to be done by United Way and a bunch of nonprofits and other folks who are do-gooders in their home. I mean, it's going to take public policy, it's going to take consistent program, it's going to take public will to ensure that we can change the trajectory here in South Fulton for folks in matter, most of them, all of us who call ourselves civic leaders and feel a sense of responsibility for the help of low-paying individuals to do the job. So how do we make sure more of us are sitting around these tables, making those decisions that are in the benefit of a few people who's struggling the most, but for whom the benefit can be greater? I will stop you there. I'll offer the remaining time for your question.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. We really appreciate your great information. At this time, I'd ask my colleagues to tell me, they answer questions, I'd like to answer them.
Good evening, Mr. Lo. This was a very good presentation. And this has, I have some particular interest in this. So I know you mentioned South Fulton County quite a bit. Are the numbers, are you able to pull the numbers for the city of South Fulton? We have neighboring zip codes, actually multiple zip codes in our neighborhood. So do you have that explanation or way you said?
We do. The, the child well-being, the way that the score has been developed, we're able to go into zip code level. And so, with the exception of maybe twenty zip codes that are outside of the area that you're concerned about, we've got the data that can give the information.
Okay, I'll be most interested in seeing that.
Sure, I'll make sure we get that too.
Also, too, what, I know you mentioned about organizations that you invest in to the community. So for instance, what organizations would you typically see like in South Fulton that you would really type like a partner with or something of that nature?
Part of our challenge is building, ensuring that there's the capacity for a number of organizations here to qualify and be able to deliver. And so that's probably been our biggest challenge, is that, you know, there are many organizations, and my colleagues can identify the names of those, and we can get some of those to you. But I think what we are struggling with, and what we struggled with in the last investment cycle, is to identify local organizations that are here that have the capacity to deliver against the workforce, education, health, and other kinds of outcomes. And that's probably been our biggest challenge, is that there aren't enough indigenous organizations with, with those capabilities to really break through progress, the kind of which I think is absolutely necessary.
And one other thing, so like, are you able to do some outreach, more outreach and be a little bit more visible in the city of South Fulton? Maybe host some parent engagement events, or just to continue to get people to really start talking about it? I know when I really started looking into it, probably about early last year, and seeing the numbers that were being put out there, and people still didn't understand it. So is there a way to weaken like of the community outreach, especially in the city, partnering with how schools affect?
Sure. So we've got a, we've got a team of folks that are responsible for various geographies across the region. We've got the team that's here with me, are the folks that worry most about the city of South Fulton. And so the other ones that invited me to be part of this conversation, so one-
So are they present in South Fulton? No, okay.
So, and so, yes. So we've got a team of folks that will, will work with you in any way we can to, to increase the visibility, but also to sort of carry this message as far and wide as we can to enlist more folks in the solution. Because it's not just about letting them know how bad it is, or letting them know how they can get involved, where the things that are working, work, so that they can amplify it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. And so, I'm familiar with the organization. I think it'd be fortunate if I from your company I have worked for you or have been very active in. So that's my segue to ask, how are you looking to engage with the city of South Fulton government? And what is the ask of us as a city?
Well, number one, we wanted to make sure that at least at preliminary level, you had the data. We certainly can spend more time going through that data so there's clarity on where, where those data come from, what they're saying, what direction they are pointing in the way of solutions to. With issues like, with issues, with opportunities like Youth Work or Career Rise, we'd like to talk with you about how we can scale those and make them more successful. We've, with Career Rise, we've had an amazing bit of success with the Metropolis, with Max, with a host of other sort of economic development-focused things. We've put more than eight hundred people through occupational training. So the question is, how do we do that more? How do we do it faster? How do we do it better? How do we bring more employers to that table and bring those employer-led solutions where they are absolutely necessary? So how can we, working with you and others, create a force in which we can make those kinds of things happen? So it's really building on the access, but also the sort of policy levers that you have with solutions that we know work, and how the, the combination of us can really bring some things to scale that have been, you know, sort of experimental and so forth.
So is there any type of workshop or training that United Way have? I know you have boards, but do you have any type of information session, like for public officials to attend, to see the actual projects that you are all involved in in the community? And how actually have you been a bit in the community?
Yes. So we, we will host learning sessions, we will host site visits to the locations where we believe some pretty powerful things are taking place. We will come to individual offices, we will address a group forum, we'll provide testimony to whatever body you think is most appropriate. And we're, we are the community's agent, so you just let us know where, how, and when it is, and the team of folks that, that's what they get paid to do, and we'll make sure we do what we're responsible for.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliam.
Thank you so very much for your presentation. I'm familiar with United Way because I volunteered sometime ago, under the guidance of one of your very capable persons sitting back here. And it was a really excellent experience, and I, I saw firsthand the kind of good work that you do by distributing grants to community organizations, and it was really an excellent experience. And not only that, I just will have to thank you over and over again for collaborating with Casa Charity to help our destitute tornado victims. It was a real big help. Not only did they provide the money, but they came out and, and really did provide a lot of good information. So I'm excited about you wanting to collaborate with the city. And one of the things that I'm finding out as I go from school to school, that's when you really find out how, I don't want to use the word terribly, but how the situation is for a lot of kids in school. And kids are coming from everywhere, it's not in the, you know, particular neighborhood that they live in. And so, there's just an awful lot of work to do, so I'm just excited for whatever, you know, you can do to help. And I do know that the person that I partnered with, with United Way, we had talked about doing, you know, more in the community. So I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you.
And you, and you raised one important thing that I hope is clear from what you said. I mean, we, we are measuring the impact that we can have in the community, we're measuring the community's challenges through the, through the lens of children, the, the most sensitive sort of indicator. I hate using the term canary in the coal mine, but, but, but as children grow, so goes the community. There's no community that is healthy where the children suffer, and there's no community that is, is doing well, is, there's no place where the children are doing well that's not doing well generally. And so, that's the best way we saw is being able to sort of identify, identify the problem, but also measure the progress we're having, is are children's lives being improved significantly by the work they're doing?
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I am glad you were here too. I enjoyed the presentation. And currently, we are exploring some possibilities within my district, where we have, we're having to work with the, the young people as well as the parents.
Yes.
Some parents are skilled, and I guess what I'm trying to find out, how can United Way assist us?
We have a whole body of work that is what they call two-gen focused. So it is about making sure that we've got two generations in that household that are availing themselves in service and going through a sort of rigorous process of self-improvement. So it's about the parents and the kids. If the kids don't raise themselves, you can't make progress with the kids exclusively. And some are, and we see what, where that goes on balance. And so it is about making sure the household improves. And so we've got, we've got work that we're doing at the education level connected to workforce development, and others that are really around this sort of two-generation approach. So we've got things that we can help with.
Thank you.
Yes.
Say no more names in here. Thank you, Bertie. We really appreciate it seeing you.
It's a pleasure, my friend.
And we look forward to working with you.
I know it's fun to you, you know it's fun.
I know it's fun.
Next item is Development Authority Guidelines presented by Christopher Pike, Economic Development Administrator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is going to be a short presentation, no PowerPoint today. Just wanted to share with you all, as you will recall, the council recently passed the resolutions to establish Development Authority. Based on feedback that we received from council, we brought back some recommendations for the council to consider. These are obviously just high-level feedback, staff recommendations for the council to take into consideration as we look to fill the positions that are, were allocated for the Development Authority. And so we provided a job description for the council of some of the things that would be necessary for an individual selected for the Development Authority, along with an application with suggested questions and things that we should be looking for, for a member of the Development Authority. And so we wanted to put these things on the work session for the council to be able to provide feedback on this, so that we can then bring back a finalized version of this for final consideration for the council at their, at a later meeting. So having said that, I will just go through some very high-level stuff, and then we can kind of dive in if there's some more clarity that we need. Basically, what we wanted to do was just let folks know what the length of the appointments will be, understanding what the requirements will be as far as meetings. Obviously, there will be some other functions outside of meetings, whether it be groundbreaking ribbon cuttings. Obviously, training is mandatory by the state, so we wanted to make sure that we clarified and put that in there as well. But then, just making sure that they understand the oversight responsibility of Development Authority, so obviously that entity needs to be managed very similar to a business. And so, understanding their relationship to their responsibility and the goals and objectives of the Development Authority was also important as well to consider, as well as just understanding what state laws are as it relates to their authority on, or their responsibility on the authority as well. So we just made that, this very high level. It's not a very drawn-out application process, but just so we can get a sense of applicants. So we basically just ask basic questions. One of the requirements by state law is that they be a resident of the city of South Fulton. So obviously, that's something that's going to be important as we make appointments to the authority, but also ask for some backgrounds and things they've done in their career to see if there's any correlation that could be utilized on the authority as well. And then just some questions about, you know, personal interests, what they think about things that they would like to see in the city of South Fulton as well, just so we get a sense of their thought process. So having, not, having said that, again, this is just high-level information. You all have had an opportunity to review this, and so we welcome any questions and feedback that we should take under consideration when we make our final presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Thank you, Mr. Pike. What will be in your final presentation that we're not seeing today?
Any recommendations or changes that the council may have, that we can maybe include, something that we may have not taken into consideration that has been a desire of the council. But for the most part, this is just the high-level things that a Development Authority appointee would be needed to consider before applying.
So, so you're talking about recommendations for the application process?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, what is the mandatory training by the city?
It's, it's state mandatory. All authority members are required by state law to attend a newly-appointed member's training for Development Authorities and Downtown Development Authority.
Like who conducts that, how many hours?
If they do it, it's offered through the CogNest Institute and GMA. So they would go to the same training. They're, they offer it at Mayor's Day, they offer it in June at the conference.
Like the same ones that we love?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Can you, let's go.
Mr. Pike, so you will be overseeing this entire process, is that correct?
No, ma'am. So these are just recommendations. My only involvement would be to help the authority kind of have a professional staff appointed to them, but they are responsible for, for their own operations. The council is responsible for appointing and selecting the members that serve the authority.
So once they're appointed, who's going to oversee that as far as, you know, make sure they're attending, they have all their training hours in case that, is that a year well?
Well, we'll provide support as professional staff, just to make them aware. Obviously, we can't instruct them to do anything, but we provide, you know, make sure that paperwork's filled out for them to attend training, making sure they're aware of when training is. And so, things of that nature, we would definitely assist because we would have more hands-on information for that.
And I want to make sure that is noted for clarity, that this board is not going to be paid or compensated. Now, is that correct?
That's correct. That is in the state law, they are not to be compensated for their work.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to verify, no additional changes? Is this an item that you could move to consent agenda?
Where do you, where do you add to that?
If we don't make any additional changes, because I want to kind of follow up to Council and colleagues' question, if we don't offer anything additional, what additional changes would you recommend? And, you know, with this- You know, with this presentation, offer anything that he said it would not? We would just incorporate any changes we would want to make?
Make some changes additional if we need to?
Mayor, I think we would want to give you some time. I know you got the documents on Friday, but give you some time to review it. And then also, we would want to put together a full packet and things. I think when we bring it back to you, we would put it on the consent agenda and probably have a more thorough work session. But I, I would say we're probably a little premature to put it on this work session, I'm sorry, this council meeting as a consent agenda item. I'm sorry.
Yes.
I, I, I would like to see a little bit more around who qualifications of the people that we really want to put on the Development Authority. I mean, I'm reading the duties, I'm reading the knowledge skills, abilities for this, to me, basic. And I would like to, I mean, this is going to be the investment arm of our city. So I would like to see a little bit more meat around who should be on this board.
We kind of leave that to the discretion of the Council. When you look at around the, the state, you have diverse people that go on these boards, from lawyers to doctors to real estate professionals. And so it really depends on both the interest of the Council as well as the vision for the Authority itself. And so it literally could be anyone who is qualified to help carry out your vision. And I think, I think pigeonholing it and defining it too much, I think we could definitely give you some examples of profiles and what may be better than us determining what those qualifications would be is maybe giving you examples from different Development Authorities of who are on their boards. Because you could simply put just bankers and real estate folks on your board, but that might not give you the diversity in which you're looking for.
And I, and, and thank you, I receive what, what you're saying. And why I might be a little familiar with the development authorities, everybody isn't. And so what I would ask, when I say everybody isn't, everybody on this council is not. This is a new city, we are new to this. And so while I would ask that we look to other cities and look to other places that have Development Authorities and see how they recruit. Because I have seen Development Authorities stay stagnant, not go anywhere, which is not going to be beneficial. And we don't have the right people on there. Because again, this is the investment arm of our city. And they're going to be able to do things we cannot do as a city. So we need to be very thoughtful about who we select.
Ms. Gilley out.
Actually, I was almost going to say the same thing about experience. But I do like, I do like what the city manager said about not pigeonholing. And maybe if looking at other cities, we can, especially since we've really never done this before, looking at other cities to see the type of people, you know, that are on. Because you're definitely going to need some type of finance person because you're going to be issuing bonds. And so you're going to need, you know, at some point, or, you know, not in, perhaps in the beginning, but you're going to need some type of expertise in some areas. So looking at other cities is going to really be helpful.
Mayor, can I contribute? So just adding on to what Councilwoman Lewis and Gilley said, I think the City of College Park has been one of the most successful and proactive Development Authorities in this, probably this region. So I can be a liaison. As you're, as you're aware, my firm represents College Park. So if there's any request that the Council wants as far as meeting with that board or, you know, just questions, feel free to report them to me and I can put you in contact with the appropriate people.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One thing to remember, I want to define explicitly what staff support is.
You said what staff support is? Okay. We can do that.
Very important. But I would have, I would have to say that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any more questions in queue? Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Ms. Clark, next. Next item is legislative review process.
Mr. Pascal calls forward this. We would just ask to give some insights into where, there was a lot of different legislation, I believe, that has kind of come through the pipeline. And so we would just ask to kind of give insights as to where some of those things were and where it is in the process. I think Mr. Pascal has just a brief update for you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As City Manager just reported, I received quite a few variations of legislation. So what you have before you is a comprehensive list of both what the departments have submitted or have in queue in addition to what has been provided by the City Attorney. So if you look at it, there are quite a few items that were already in queue prior to the approval of the legislative process. So I just kind of want you guys to take a look at those. So when we're following up or if there are any questions regarding where things are in the process, we're kind of working those details out. But more so, what we're moving towards now is SharePoint and utilizing that piece to kind of streamline a lot of the back and forth so we can actually see that actual working document as people are updating and providing feedback. And so we're working on that mechanism right now to streamline. I think we're going to start with the department heads and see how that works with them. And then we'll roll out the implementation to Council for you and then provide any type of training or any kind of overview of the process as we move along.
Okay. So I know we talked about this first base, second base, third base thing. I don't know if we've adopted that. I'm not clear as I look at this is, just, just help me understand what I'm looking at. Are the, is the department, which department this legislation is assigned to for review?
So that those, what you see before you is legislation that's pertinent to that specific department that has been proposed?
So if, I'm assuming, so I'm just going to use this address as ordinance, the people who would review that ordinance are community regulatory figures?
That are submitted for review?
They submitted it. So this, so where we see the partner, department, they are actually the sponsor.
We're calling it sponsor because the departments don't sponsor any legislation.
They wrote, they came up with the ordinance, or this is their suggestion?
Yes, Jason.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that the first two lines are the, I'm sorry, the first two columns, sponsor and department, are where the ordinance originated?
Correct.
Okay. All of the FIS things for these are empty. So that means none of these have a FIS?
Not all of them. As I stated before, most of that legislation that you have before you precedes the legislative process.
So will FIS be done for these?
Once they are moved forward, there should be FIS provided.
And, and, and just because there are none, there is none to look at as an example, what would, what would appear in the FIS column? Like the date that the FIS is due or the person that's reviewing it? What will we see in this column?
It will either be a completion date or a date that that FIS was submitted for, to initiate the process.
And all the, all of these FIS will be handled by the same person?
It will be by the manager.
Ms. Haynes? Okay.
Or it's probably better to say finance because the chief financial officer, it all really starts with him. She may originate it and start the process, but he would always have the ability to put his input there. And I'd also, I think, while you're going into it technically, remember you're going to have to do as a council, the SharePoint training and all of that stuff. But there were a bunch of different items that preceded the legislative process. And I don't believe that all of those items from council-developed legislation have actually been received by staff yet. So all of those are not included. Some are though.
Um, um, the, the, the point of my question isn't so much like, is the list comprehensive? But I just want, let's say I have an ordinance and I'm trying to figure out where it is in the process. I'm assuming that by looking at this sheet, I can tell exactly where it is in the process, whose desk it's on. So if it's stuck, I can go to that person?
Technically, but it wouldn't be that sheet right there. I have a different document that provides that type of update that you referred to, which would be the legislative tracker. But again, as I said in the beginning, we're moving towards that SharePoint piece where you will have access and you can actually see where it is in the process. So if it's held up, you know, at a department review or a legal review, you know where it is in the process.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Woods?
So some of the legislation here missing sponsors on, so do we just need to schedule some time with you or send you an email to tell you the updated spreadsheet?
I would have to say, yes, that's the information that was provided to.
Yeah, because some of the sponsors are missing some of this. And also, it would be helpful if you can, if you don't find, can you sort this by sponsor? So that like everything that Councilor has sponsored is pretty much aligned so we can go through. And then anything that doesn't have a sponsor by it is probably grouped together. And so that would be easy for us to go through. And if the things that we have sponsored, we, that would easily, that would be easy for us to fill in.
Don't see a problem with that at all?
Okay, thank you.
I know some of these just sitting here, it might have been before department heads arrived. I know building codes, we adopted legislation in 2017 and some of these other ideas like the law entertainment, some of those. So are they a mid-band or do you think it may have just been that they may not have been aware the ordinance is that we had already adopted?
Um, I would have to defer to the City Attorney now. I'm not concerned.
The Attorney, yes, sir.
So for example, I know building codes, we passed ordinance on adult entertainment, a number of them on this list we did like in 2017.
Yeah, I think so this list, so I, I did receive a list and I didn't notice it was, the staff was asked, okay, what do you want in place? But I'm gonna have to go out and just cross out stuff that's already been implemented. So you will see some stuff here that has already been adopted. And I plan to go through and scratch that out.
I just wanted to share with Council the thought that I had about this process. I, I am not going to attempt to change the process. This is just something that I would be including in my legislation. When we did the first read of the Vanderbilt ordinance, which was amazing, thank you very much, Mayor Clinton Baker, I got some questions and I wasn't quite sure how to answer them. And what I, what I would suggest might be a good idea for us to do is at the top of the legislation where we list a few talking points explaining what are the benefits of the legislation. And in that way, when, it, it does, it serves two purposes. When, when residents are looking at the legislation, they can understand in simple language, this is exactly what it's supposed to do. And then also as a council, when we are talking about the legislation to the public, we all have the same talking points about what the, what the benefits of the legislation are. So from now on, when I submit legislation, I'm going to get with our communications staff to just make sure that there are talking points to explain like what the benefits are of the legislation so that everyone, when we pass it, because we're supposed to speak with the unanimous voice, we can all extol the same purpose. Ms. Lee?
I don't disagree with you. I attempted to do that the night that the legislation was passed. To, to, I attempted to explain that the night that the legislation was passed. So I do agree with you that some legislation gets so complicated that the people even understand here that they don't. So I would agree with that.
Are you trying to get on?
Yes, sir, I just.
Go right ahead, Ms. Lee, I'm asking.
Thank you. I just wanted to add to what the Mayor said and Councilman Lee. There's a real good example, if you go to Clarkston, they have a real small cliff note version, it's like a lame term, whereas anyone could understand what the intention of the legislation is. So if you could check that out, it may be, you know, a good guide.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That ends our work session.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that we be excused for executive session. Executive session for real estate personnel and litigation.
The pop move is second. All of those in discussion? All of those in favor? Hands to your hands.